Ladies and gentlemen, I resume the 47th session, the 47th meeting of the 46th session of the Human Rights Council. We shall now begin consideration of draft proposals tabled at this session. I remind you that the voting process is a members-only process. Observer states may intervene in only two instances: at the stage of introduction of a draft proposal or if the observer state is a country concerned by a draft resolution or decision. Apart from these two instances, observer states will not be in a position to take the floor until the voting process is completed, not even on a point of order. The secretariat has verified that all representatives of the state members of the council wishing to take part in the voting process, as well as observer states introducing draft proposals and concerned countries that would speak under item two are present in the Zoom meeting. The meeting has been locked, and we can now begin taking action. We will follow the extraordinary modalities for electronic voting that were adopted by the council on the 18th of March 2021. Allow me to recall that a test vote using the e-Recorded Votes module on the eDelegate platform will be conducted at the beginning of each meeting before the council starts taking action on draft proposals.
Do you want to vote manually?
Once this test vote is completed, we will proceed with a consideration of draft proposals in the chronological order of agenda items. Within each agenda item, we will act upon draft texts in the order of their submission. I will inform you when a text is not ready for action. As president of this council, I will try, to the greatest extent possible, to grant the time necessary to concerned parties to undertake negotiations on draft texts in order for them to be adopted by consensus. The voting process would proceed via the Zoom platform in the same manner as it used to be in Room 20. Main sponsors of draft proposals would introduce their texts via Zoom or pre-recorded video messages, and members of the council would also participate via Zoom or pre-recorded video messages to make general comments and explanations of vote before the vote. May I remind you, and this is very important, that in accordance with our voting process, all procedural motions such as oral amendments, no-action motions, and requests for votes on separate paragraphs should be announced during the general comment segment. If this is not the case and a procedural motion is raised when the vote has started with explanation of vote, the motion will be deemed inadmissible. Please do bear this in mind. Should any state member of the council wish to make a procedural motion as part of general comments, the representative of that state will be able to do so by: one, pressing the 'Raise hand' button; two, indicating the motion in the chat box; and three, putting their camera on and raising their hands. I also remind you that explanations of vote and general comments after the vote will be allowed only after the action has been taken on all draft proposals under a specific agenda item. I would also like to remind you that in accordance with Rule 128 of the Rules of Procedure of the General Assembly, the sponsor of a draft proposal or an amendment is not permitted to explain his or her vote or her proposal or amendment. Finally, the speaking time during the voting process is three minutes for all, including concerned countries. If more than one delegation is introducing a draft proposal, this speaking time should be shared between them. Should there be a request for a vote on a specific draft proposal, I will ask the secretariat to activate the vote on that draft proposal on the eDelegate platform. For security reasons, the system may periodically log representatives of the state's members of the council out of the eDelegate platform. Therefore, before opening the vote on any draft proposal where there has been a request for a vote, I will ask representatives to log out and log in again. Once I ask the secretariat to activate the vote on a draft proposal, representatives would then see the specific draft proposal appear on the e-Recorded Votes module of the eDelegate platform, upon which they will be able to electronically cast their vote on that specific draft proposal. Representatives may also need to refresh the page by clicking on the 'Refresh' button in order for that specific draft proposal to appear on their screen. I will proceed slowly with a vote in order to allow all state's members of the council to have ample time to cast their vote. Should there be more than one representative from a state member of the council connected to the eDelegate platform and casting a vote for that state, the platform would reflect the last vote cast by a representative of that state. Representatives would be able to change or delete their votes so long as the vote remains open. Once all state's members of the council present and voting have cast their votes and checked that their votes are accurately reflected on the eDelegate platform, I would ask the secretariat to close the vote on the specific draft proposal. Once the voting is closed, representatives will no longer be able to change or delete their vote. A hotline will be in operation throughout the process in case representatives have difficulties communicating via Zoom, any technical issues they are facing. The hotline number is 022 917 7573. And I'll read it again: 022 917 7573. I wish to now request state's members of the council to now log in with their usual credentials on eDelegate and to go to the e-Recorded Votes module on the platform following the guidelines that were recirculated by the secretariat yesterday afternoon. If you are already logged in on the platform for the reasons I explained earlier, please log out and log in again. If all representatives are now logged in, I will ask the secretariat to open the test vote on L0. I invite all state's members of the council to cast their vote. Can I ask all state's members of the council to cast their vote, please? I see that all representatives have now cast their vote. Please verify that your vote is accurately reflected on the Zoom screen. If any representative is facing a technical issue, this is the moment that you should tell us about the difficulty that you are facing. I see no hands raised. I therefore ask the secretariat to close the test vote. Ladies and gentlemen, having successfully completed the test vote, we will now begin consideration of draft proposals. You can now see on the Zoom screen the list of draft proposals ready for action today, and almost all the PBIs have been posted on the HRC extranet. The council will now consider draft resolution L1 Rev 1 entitled 'Promoting Reconciliation, Accountability, and Human Rights in Sri Lanka'. I give the floor to the representative of the United Kingdom to introduce the draft text. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The United Kingdom has the honour to present draft resolution L1 Rev 1 on behalf of a core group, also comprised in Canada, Germany, Malawi, Montenegro, and North Macedonia. Madam President, this council has sought to promote reconciliation, accountability, and human rights in Sri Lanka for almost 10 years. It was to Sri Lanka's great credit that between 2015 and 2019, it agreed to a consensual framework to address the legacy of several decades of devastating conflict. The 2015 framework followed a detailed report by the High Commissioner of Human Rights, which concluded that large-scale violations and abuses of human rights by all parties had occurred. Sri Lanka's commitments to the council were ambitious, but these recognised that the only way to bring reconciliation, to heal the suffering of the many victims, and to avoid a recurrence of such violations was to engage with the UN's findings. It was therefore a source of profound regret when Sri Lanka withdrew its support for the 2015 framework last year. Since then, the core group has encouraged new cooperative framework with Sri Lanka, but unfortunately to no avail. This resolution responds to the High Commissioner's most recent report. It acknowledges progress where this has been made. It also reflects the High Commissioner's findings that the human rights situation has deteriorated, with particular concerns for human rights defenders in civil society space and members of different ethnic and religious communities, including Tamils, Muslims, and Christians. Independent institutions have been weakened, and impunity has become more entrenched as progress in emblematic cases has stalled. Some of those who had sought to pursue justice and advance accountability through the national courts have found themselves persecuted and in one case imprisoned, while others who were convicted or suspected of large-scale violations have been pardoned and promoted. Madam President, this resolution and this core group is not anti-Sri Lanka. We are friends of Sri Lanka and its people. We bring this resolution in the hope that it will help advance the human rights of all communities, including Buddhist, Christian, Muslim, Sinhala, or Tamil. And most importantly, that it will help prevent the recurrence of past grave violations which the High Commissioner's report warns this council about in such clear terms. We regret that agreement could not be reached with Sri Lanka during the four informal meetings on the draft resolution, but we thank the distinguished ambassador of Sri Lanka for his participation. Nonetheless, we believe this constructive and balanced text provides the best framework to support justice and lasting reconciliation and address the most critical human rights challenges. We call on all members of this council to support this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I have been informed by the secretariat that there is one additional co-sponsor. I now give the floor to members of the council who wish to make general comments. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Austria.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the honour to speak on behalf of the EU member states that are members of the Human Rights Council. This general comment has been agreed by the EU as a whole. We thank the Cross Regional Group for presenting this very balanced resolution. Reconciliation, accountability, and human rights in Sri Lanka have been considered in the Human Rights Council for many years, including through consensual resolutions in previous years. The EU regrets that the government of Sri Lanka has withdrawn its support to these resolutions. We are concerned about the setback of the important gains made. It is key that the Human Rights Council signals international communities' continued support for post-conflict reconciliation and accountability in Sri Lanka. This resolution is also important given the warning signs of a deteriorating human rights situation, including erosion of democratic checks and balances, rise of exclusion rhetoric, intensified surveillance and intimidation of CSOs, human rights defenders and victims, as well as discrimination of persons belonging to religious and ethnic minority communities. The EU is deeply concerned about these developments. We call on the government of Sri Lanka to continue to promote reconciliation, accountability, and human rights in Sri Lanka, including through cooperation on this resolution. For the above-mentioned reasons, the EU supports resolution L1/Rev 1 and hopes it will be adopted by this council by consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Philippines.
Thank you, Madam President. The Philippines engaged actively in the consultations on this draft resolution. We are disappointed that penholders did not take on board in a balanced manner the perspectives and positions of Sri Lanka. We note that Sri Lanka engaged in the informal and good faith even after the failure of the OHCHR to adhere to high standards of transparency, objectivity, and fairness in reporting. We regret that the penholders repeated this failure and did not take the opportunity to promote the consultations as a platform to uphold these principles and maintain a discourse based on reason. Three things are clear in this resolution. First, it pursues a political agenda that is blind to reason and methods of reasoning. Second, the mandate given to the OHCHR requires a budget of $2.8 billion, mostly for salaries of 12 new hires. We regret the late posting of this information and the disregard. We call on the council to examine this practice that relegates the budget and the other practical implications of a resolution as an afterthought rather than factors in our decision-making as they should be. Third, this mandate is contemplated against a possible non-cooperation of Sri Lanka, and therefore resources are likely to go to waste if our benchmark is effective action and impact on the ground. Madam President, the rest of the elements of this draft resolution are sketchy and unmoored, particularly its vision of a role for the OHCHR in collecting evidence and development strategies for future accountability processes. These usurp the role of the state as duty bearer. While recognising that no country has a perfect record on human rights, the Philippines has appreciated that the government of Sri Lanka has pursued reconciliation, accountability, and human rights through inclusive domestic processes. This is despite severe challenges in its resources and post-conflict security situation. There is no merit in actions by the council that disrespect these national processes and are driven by simplistic generalisations of complex conditions on the ground. Many of us in Geneva are sheltered from the actual experience of terrorism, conflict, and socio-economic challenges that are everyday realities to Sri Lanka's 21 million people. This is a handicap that prevents some council members from being more sober in their judgements about the situation in Sri Lanka and from flexing the powers of the council more wisely. Madam President, the Philippines will vote 'no' on this resolution, and we ask other council members to apply wisdom, responsibility, and superiority on this matter, and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any other delegations who wish to make general comments? I see none, and we shall now hear from the concerned country. I will give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sri Lanka.
Madam President, it is deeply regrettable that a group of countries has tabled a country-specific resolution against Sri Lanka in spite of Sri Lanka's consistent and constructive engagement with the Human Rights Council and with the proponents of the resolution themselves. Sri Lanka considers the draft resolution to be unwarranted, unjustified, and in violation of the relevant articles of the United Nations Charter, in particular Article 2, Subsection 7, and relevant sections of the United Nations General Assembly Resolution 60/251 that provides for the mandate of the Human Rights Council. It is based on the rejected report of the OHCHR on Sri Lanka which was tabled at this session and which violates the principles of sovereign equality of all states and non-interference in internal affairs. The resolution is presented without the consent of Sri Lanka as the country concerned and is therefore unhilful and divisive. No country has a greater interest in bringing about reconciliation among its peoples than the country concerned, a point that has repeatedly been emphasised during the proceedings of this council. The list of co-sponsors of the resolution amply demonstrates the divisive nature of this resolution. Madam President, Sri Lanka categorically rejects the unprecedented proposal in OP 6 of this resolution to expand the role of the OHCHR. This is a dangerous precedent and will have wide-ranging implications for all countries. All members of this council will agree that this body cannot assume tasks not assigned to it by the UN General Assembly in Resolution 60/251 or in subsequent resolutions. In addition, I cannot emphasise enough the dangers posed to all nations, particularly those of the Global South, by the trajectory taken in this resolution which is urging action on the basis of emerging trends and warning signs, that is, events that have not yet happened. In this context, it is highly regrettable that the draft resolution that has been presented today appears to have ignored all these reservations and concerns. Against this background, I call upon all members of this council to objectively assess whether Sri Lanka represents a situation that warrants the financial and human resources and the urgent attention of this council in this exaggerated and polarised manner at a time of severe financial constraints indicated by the secretariat. Over $2.8 million is the estimated cost of this exercise, and over a dozen new staff members have to be recruited according to the FDI. Madam President, notwithstanding the stated objectives of the proponents of the resolution, Sri Lanka is of the view that this resolution will polarise Sri Lankan society and adversely affect economic development, peace, and harmony. For all the above reasons, Sri Lanka rejects this draft resolution and requests the members of this council to reject this resolution by a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I have been informed by the secretariat that there are PBIs in the amount of $2,856,300, and copies of the statement were posted on the extranet. I now give the floor to members of the council who wish to make explanations of votes before the vote on the draft proposal. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
Madam President, China commands the Sri Lankan government for its commitment to promoting and protecting human rights, promoting sustainable economic and social development, improving people's living standards, safeguarding the rights of vulnerable groups, promoting national reconciliation and combating terrorism. We congratulate the Sri Lankan government on its achievements in these areas. According to GA Resolution 60/251, the work of the HRC should follow the principles of universality, impartiality, objectivity, and non-selectivity. All parties should promote and protect human rights through general dialogue and cooperation and refrain from double standards and politicising human rights issues. We advocate that all countries should observe the purposes and principles of the UN Charter, respect the sovereignty and independence of other countries, and abandon the practice of interfering in other countries' internal affairs, undermining other countries' sovereignty and international cooperation under the pretext of human rights. The sponsors of draft resolution L1 Rev 1 disregards the efforts and achievements by the Sri Lankan government to promote and protect human rights, ignores the wishes of the Sri Lankan people, and interferes in Sri Lanka's internal affairs under the guise of human rights, and disrupts the excellent situation of Sri Lanka's development and stability. This doesn't help to promote and protect human rights. Rather, it's a typical example of politicising human rights. The HRC should not facilitate this dangerous trend to safeguard the purposes and principles of the UN Charter and the principles established in GA Resolution 60/251. China requests a vote on draft resolution L1 Rev 1 and will vote against it. We call on the HRC members to jointly vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Japan.
Thank you, Madam President. Japan recognises the need for improvement regarding the human rights situation in Sri Lanka as well as the need for further efforts towards national reconciliation in the country. At the same time, Japan takes note of the actions taken by Sri Lanka, such as the establishment of the Commission of Inquiry to investigate past cases of human rights violations and the payment of reparations amounting to 142 million rupees during 2020. In order to achieve national reconciliation and improvement of the human rights situation, it is critical for Sri Lanka to implement its own initiatives. To this end, Japan has supported Sri Lanka, including through dispatching our experts to the country. Japan hopes the international community will encourage and support Sri Lanka's efforts. For the above reasons, Japan will abstain from voting on this draft resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Pakistan.
Thank you, Madam President. Pakistan has always advocated dialogue and engagement as preferred means to advance respect for and to resolve concerns around human rights. Consent often cooperation with the country concerned are essential ingredients in support of national efforts to promote compliance with human rights obligations. We appreciate Sri Lanka's constructive engagement throughout the informal consultation on the draft resolution before the council. The Sri Lankan delegation made proposals to align the draft text with its national action plans on reconciliation and accountability, including through empowerment of Commission of Inquiry as well as offices on missing persons and reparations. of Inquiry as well as offices on missing persons and reparations. We regret rejection of these proposals. Ignoring these suggestions were a missed opportunity to secure national ownership of the draft resolution in line with aspirations of the Sri Lankan people. Madam President, during the course of informal consultations, Sri Lanka and a number of other delegations had explained that operative paras five and six of the draft text lack balance, proportionality, and inconsistency. For example, preamble paras four and eleven of the text reaffirm the sovereignty of Sri Lanka and welcome its continued engagement with the UN and its human rights mechanisms. However, these provisions are at complete variance with the legally uncannable external accountability mechanism. We note that such provisions are neither grounded in nor are drawn from the purposes and principles of the UN Charter, the founding U N G A Resolution 60/251, and the I B package. Similarly, operative para seven seeks to expand the scope and the context of 12 years-long Sri Lanka’s engagement with the council. We note that the original process that was rooted in promoting reconciliation and accountability in the context of civil war in 2009 is now incompatible with the approach and contents of the draft resolution before the council. Madam President, each country, including the sponsors of this resolution, have human rights challenges on which there may be diversity of views, interpretations, and solutions depending upon national context and circumstances. Having said that, we have seen media reports related to concerns over barriers during the COVID-19 pandemic. We appreciate the steps taken by Sri Lankan government to address these concerns, and we encourage Sri Lanka to continue such steps to preserve the pluralistic subject of the society where people of different faiths have been living in harmony for centuries. Madam President, the estimated P B Is of $2.8 million US dollars for the annual implementation of OP-6 also raises serious questions about the equitable utilization of regular budget, especially when the O H C H R and the council are facing serious liquidity crisis. Deployment of 13% O H C H R on Sri Lanka, nearly the size of a branch, can hardly be justified when O H C H R is faced with serious financial crunch. We request this O H C H R for a breakdown of P B Is and share information on how the financial resources would be arranged for this mandate without compromising other mandated activities from the regular budget. Resort to extra budgetary resources or voluntary contributions would undermine the transparency, impartiality, and credibility of the whole process. Madam President, draft resolution fails, also fails to acknowledge the long struggle of the Sri Lankan people and government against L T T E, an internationally recognized terrorist organization. The horrendous terrorist activities by this organization aided, abetted, and financed externally had resulted in the loss of innocent lives and depriving the people of Sri Lanka from their basic rights and freedoms. The draft resolution fails to condemn these crimes unequivocally and shies away from a call for accountability of the L T T E and its sponsors and financiers. Unfortunately, the draft resolution appears to rekindle the sufferings rather than healing the wounds of the people of Sri Lanka. Madam President, in view of these reasons, Pakistan delegation would call the resolution to abort and vote against it. I thank you.
Thank you. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Venezuela.
Madam President. President, Venezuela reiterates its opposition to the selective practice wielded by some countries and members of this council, who for purely political grounds table initiatives such as this draft resolution L1/Rev. 1 against the Socialist Democratic Republic of Sri Lanka. Such initiatives do not enjoy the assent of the country concerned, and they violate the principles of respect for sovereignty and non-interference in the domestic affairs of states. We are deeply troubled that the text of the draft resolution seeks to establish the competency of the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights to collate criminal evidence for future judicial processes, turning it into a body of criminal inquiry, a flagrant violation of the mandate contained in Resolution 48.141 of the General Assembly which established the O H C H R in the first place. We are also deeply alarmed by the distortion of the preventive approach as a concept, preventive in terms of human rights, that is, a distorted and perverted interpretation of that goal which is further embedded in this antagonistic initiative against Sri Lanka, which seeks in advance of any concrete findings to disproportionately punish alleged violations of human rights, violations which never took place. It is regrettable that the sponsors of draft Resolution L1 Rev. 1 seem to have ignored the major efforts undertaken by the government of Sri Lanka to comply with its commitments in terms of human rights and to do so since the restoration of peace in 2009. President Venezuela rejects as baseless the interventionist attempts underway into the internal process being experienced by this country towards true national reconciliation. We would like to flag the major risk inherent in biased draft resolutions which follow an interventionist model such as this one. This practice is a throwback to the anachronistic practices and selective proceedings which some major powers and their allies seek to impose, an assault on independence and sovereignty of the countries of the Global South, particularly those countries that will not bow the knee to the whims of these global powers. We condemn the selective nature, the politicization, and the blatant double standards in these initiatives which establish hostile mandates at the behest of those who seek to uphold murky interests of their own. Some governments of the countries which have promoted these draft resolutions have themselves committed and are still committing serious human rights violations, yet they themselves have never been the subject of similar initiatives. Sri Lanka is cooperating actively with this council and its mechanisms, and with the O H C H R, demonstrating major headway made in the promotion and protection of the human rights of its people. This draft resolution is entirely unwarranted, for which reason it should be rejected by the members of the Security Council, and we call upon them all to vote against it. For all of the aforementioned reasons, Venezuela energetically and categorically opposes draft Resolution L1 Rev. 1, and we will vote against. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the Russian Federation.
Thank you, Madam President. The Russian delegation once again reaffirms its position about the fact that it is not acceptable for the council to consider politicized country resolutions. Experience has shown that these rarely improve the situation of human rights on the ground. On the contrary, they tend to drive the state concerned away from constructive cooperation with international human rights mechanisms. A clear example of this is the draft resolution on promoting reconciliation, accountability, and human rights in Sri Lanka. Instead of trying to support the country’s delegation and encourage it to engage in dialogue, the sponsors of the draft resolution have preferred to continue using a former practice of making allegations against it. This draft resolution does not reflect balance or objectivity. Therefore, the Russian Federation will vote against this draft resolution, and we call on other states’ members of the H R C to follow suit. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cuba.
Thank you, President. The Human Rights Council should prioritize cooperation and constructive and respectful dialogue, and universal mechanisms such as the U P R should be used as the sole guarantee of ensuring that we fairly and not on a selective basis address human rights issues and concerns. The resolution before us currently does not enjoy the support of Sri Lanka. The government of this country has provided clear and convincing and abundant proof on its position with regard to this resolution, and that should be respected. For that reason, that draft resolution will only further serve the ends of politicization, bias, and double standards which have crept into this forum and which should be decried. We agree with the opinion and the concerns that have been flagged by previous speakers about the prevention component contained within this draft resolution, and we’re also concerned about the mandate that we are seeking to confer upon the O H C H R if we adopt this resolution, calling upon them or granting them the right to compile evidence as a precursor to future trials. Cuba will continue to uphold the basic principles of cooperation, dialogue, and exchange between all countries, and to do so on the basis of the content of the United Nations Charter. President, we reject this draft resolution. It does not refer to issues related to the P B I that will be entailed by its adoption. There has certainly not been enough discussion on the imputed P B Is. For all of these reasons, we will vote against this resolution.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of India.
Madam President, India believes in the primary responsibility of the states for the promotion and protection of human rights and constructive international dialogue and cooperation guided by the principles and purposes of the UN Charter in support of such efforts. As an immediate neighbor, India has contributed to the relief, resettlement, rehabilitation, and reconstruction process in Sri Lanka after 2009. Our development assistance has focused on the restoration of livelihoods and economic revival, especially in Sri Lanka’s northern and eastern provinces. Madam President, India’s approach to the question of human rights in Sri Lanka is guided by two fundamental considerations. One is a support to the Tamils of Sri Lanka for equality, justice, dignity, and peace; the other is in ensuring the unity, stability, and territorial integrity of Sri Lanka. We have always believed that these two goals are mutually supportive, and Sri Lanka’s progress is best assured by simultaneously addressing both objectives. India supports the call by the international community for the government of Sri Lanka to fulfill its commitments on the demolition of political authority, including through the early holding of elections for provincial councils, and to ensure that all provincial councils are able to operate effectively in accordance with the 13th Amendment to the Sri Lankan Constitution. At the same time, we believe that the work of O H C H R should be in conformity with the mandate given by the relevant resolutions of the UN General Assembly. We would urge that the government of Sri Lanka carries forward the process of reconciliation, address the aspirations of Tamil community, and continues to engage constructively with the international community to ensure that the fundamental freedoms and human rights of all its citizens are fully protected. I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Brazil for a video statement.
Madam President, Brazil thanks the core group for presenting the draft resolution on Sri Lanka. We commend the participation of the Sri Lankan ambassador during the informal consultations as a proof of goodwill which certainly contributed to a more open and balanced approach during the discussions. We regret that in the end, the Sri Lankan mission decided to dissociate from the process due to different perspectives that could not be accommodated by the core group. In our view, those differences are not irreconcilable, however. While we acknowledge that progress was achieved on the ground in Sri Lanka, we understand that the situation of the country remains of interest to this council. The council needs to bear in mind the risk of new episodes of violence and intolerance related to religion or ethnicity. It can support local authorities to foster, to this extent possible, a meaningful and sustained process of promotion, of reconciliation, accountability, and human rights in the country. On the other hand, Brazil firmly believes the engagement and cooperation of the concerned country is key to the success of the initiative. While we encourage Sri Lanka to continue to cooperate in good faith, we stress the government’s legitimate concerns regarding key issues. Firstly, it did not come unnoticed that some of the recommendations in the office’s report presented to the council might have overstepped the mandate of a body that does not deal with peace and security issues within the UN system. Secondly, evidence relating to violations and abuses of human rights can only result from impartial, transparent, and thorough investigations. Prejudgments and politically motivated accusations must be kept at bay. We also share concerns expressed by some delegations during consultations on the implications of OP-6. It requires certain measures to be taken by the office without the establishment of an international accountability mechanism, which would have been the common practice. With the above-mentioned considerations, Brazil will vote in favor of draft Resolution 46/L. 1 Rev. 1 on Sri Lanka. I thank you.
Thank you. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Bolivia.
Gracias. Thank you very much, President. As this is the first time that I am taking the floor, I’d like to take the opportunity to express my government’s commitment to ensuring this council can work towards the proper protection of motion of human rights. Bolivia rekindled democracy in 2020. The interpreter apologizes, but the sound does not allow for interpretation, and we do not have the statement. We do not accept that human rights are used as a political tool. Therefore, we will vote against this resolution. At the same time, we reaffirm that it is necessary to fight against impunity and ensure access to justice and effective remedy for the victims.
Thank you. Are there any other requests for explanation or vote before the vote? I see none. At the request of the delegations of China and Pakistan, the council will now proceed to a recorded vote on draft proposal L1 Rev. 1. I ask all members of the council to log out and log in again to eDelegate to avoid being logged out of the system for security reasons while the vote is taking place. Please note that your vote will appear on the screen after a delay of four to six seconds. I now ask the secretariat to activate the vote, and I ask all delegations to register their votes. For the information of all delegations, one delegation is trying to vote and is trying to log in again. I ask for your patience, please. Could all the delegations please ensure that your votes are accurately reflected on the screen? If so, I will ask the secretariat to close the vote. The voting is now closed. The results of the recorded votes are as follows: twenty-two in favor, eleven against, fourteen abstentions. Draft proposal L one rev one is therefore adopted.